Should be playing with the mics either.
Should be playing.
You're in the midst of something there it looks like. Okay. Yeah, right, so on the new agenda, I'm thinking about the morning.
I'd like to call the meeting of March 16th, 2020 to order. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Figueroa.
Present.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Keel. Council Mayor Protem Lee. Councilmember McCluskey.
Here.
Mayor Protem Worthington.
Here.
Mayor Belisi.
Here. May I have a motion to excuse Councilmembers Keel and Mayor, uh, Councilmember Protem Lee?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, Councilmember Fleming, will you please lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Excuse me, I have a, a motion to amend the agenda. And that motion would strike items number 10, court service agreement. Item 11, Parks Capital Improvement Project List. It would then insert a new item nine, certificate of existence of emergency, certification of existence of emergency. And after our executive session would add another item, which is council training in office 365, including Microsoft Teams. That'll be in the conference room, council conference room. There's no action to be taken as a result of the, of that item. Does council understand that?
I'll second your motion for, to amend.
All in favor of the amended agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time, we are on our public comment section. If, is there anyone in the public that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, not seeing any, we will move to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve or amend the consent agenda as proposed?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, we are under our council consideration portion of our meeting. May I please have Jack Eklund forward, come forward to present staff report on the University Place ADA Transition Plan? We have previously studied this item. It is now before us for consideration.
Madam Mayor, City Council, the American with Disabilities Act requires city sets to develop, implement, and maintain an ADA transition plan.
I don't think you're on, Jack.
Okay, let's start, let's start again. Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. The American with Disabilities Act requires cities sets as university place to develop, implement, and maintain an ADA transition plan. The purpose of this plan is to evaluate our existing public infrastructure and facilities and identify any steps necessary to bring those facilities up to current ADA standards. In December of 2018, we adopted our initial ADA transition plan. This update, this 2020 update, we have provided additional detail in the form of a financial schedule to provide a better indication of financial expenditures per year that would be needed to achieve full ADA compliant facilities within 20 years. With that, I recommend adopting the adopted, or the attached ADA plan update, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, at this time, are there any clarifications from council members regarding the presentation? Okay, not seeing any. This is under, for council consideration. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this issue? Not seeing any, I will close the public comment section and open it up for council consideration. May I have an amendment or motion, please?
Make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting the 2020 update to the University Place ADA Transition Plan.
Second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any comments?
If I may, let's see.
Council, uh, Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you. See, the likes, the mics are live, so, um, let's see. The comment I had is, it's a significant amount of money that this calls for, but I've, and we have all the best intentions of being able to carry this off, which is to create these improvements, but it's over, we don't have that amount of resource available in competing purposes. So it will be quite some years before we're able to do that. Unless we get external funding, which our staff has done a very good job of finding external funding, at times an amazing job for our sidewalk program particularly. Nonetheless, it will be many, many years, and I don't want to have the public think that this is something that is going to change quickly. It is something will change as we have the resources coming to us to be able to afford that.
Any other council comments? Okay, not, not seeing any. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Eklund.
Thank you.
At this time, our next item on the agenda is the council rules remote participation. May we please have a staff report from our attorney, Matt Kaser?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Matt Kaser, City Attorney. Before you tonight is the first of a several emergency-related actions which are currently on your agenda. This one relates specifically to your council rules of procedure. As council may recall, at your January retreat, council directed staff to review updates to three separate components of your council rules. One being remote participation, two addressing council member absences, and three addressing the timeframe in which council would talk about council member Protem and extended absences to trigger that discussion. In light of recent events, the decision has been made to, to jettison the other two for, and continue that discussion for a later point in time, even though those rule changes have been drafted and could otherwise have been brought forward, given priority to the current one of remote participation. At the retreat, council had expressed a strong desire to maintain certain things. One, maintain its current view of remote participation would be the exception rather than the rule. However, recognize that remote participation could be appropriate in emergency situations. That language is embodied within the rule right now. There is also a second exception, which is, which staff would commend to the council, which I would put in the rule of necessity. That is, in the event that you drop below a quorum or other minimum threshold necessary to secure a vote, that remote participation would be allowed so that council could, by necessity, conduct its applicable business. These rules, of course, would be subject to any technical limitations that are otherwise present. It does not guarantee remote participation. We'd still need the audiovisual equipment and the like for that. And council at the tail end of the agenda will be having some related training on some of the techniques that we have identified for that. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Are there any questions at this time from council? Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. So thank you for putting this together. Seems quite timely. The, certainly we can understand the need for an emergency process, or at least I can, that would allow us to conduct business, particularly as we are all wondering what, if any of us may be in a self-quarantined situation or something of that nature. Good example, I suppose. We didn't know that back in January when we talked about this, but it seems a potential occurrence now. The second part of this, though, the second condition would be not necessarily an emergency situation, but could be a more regular business situation in which a council member finds themselves unable to attend in person, but is out of town, and they can make a quorum, allowing for a vote, or they could make, if necessary, some other process. And I assume that other process would be a vote that would require a supermajority.
That's, that is exactly the circumstance in which that other language was intended for. There are a number of statutory matters which require five votes, for example. But those are the exception rather than the rule.
Trying to remember if an emergency declaration, or certification requires four or five.
It requires a majority of the council. However, if we sought to take immediate action on an ordinance, that would require a majority plus one of the whole council being five.
Okay, so good examples for us there. Okay, I certainly support this for the emergency purposes, and I'm thinking about supporting it for the purpose of quorum. It's a little, I'm a little hesitant to open this up the door too wide, and, and I think I expressed that back in January when we discussed this as well.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, well, I, I appreciate you adding language in there to, to make it an exception for, to keep council here at the dais whenever possible. But I know in the past, we've had a few instances where we have been without a quorum or we're struggling to ensure it due to council commitments or illnesses or what have you. So I like the way the language has been rewritten to address that and, and still indicate to council that their job is to be at the dais whenever possible, so. At this time, if there are no additional comments from council, we will open it up for any public comment. So if there's anybody on, in our audience that wishes to comment on this, this is your opportunity. Okay, I don't see any. We will close the public comment section, and may I have a motion for council consideration? Okay, we have Councilmember Fleming approving the motion, and Councilmember McCluskey seconding any discussion. Okay, not seeing any. All in favor of the proposed motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, not, not hearing any, motion passes. Thank you. All right, the next item is the new agenda item as proposed this evening or as amended this evening, the certification of existence of emergency. Our attorney, Council, Matt Kaser, you're up.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Matt Kaser, City Attorney. Before the council tonight is the second of the emergency-related actions related to the current situation, which are before a council. Earlier in, the council has a fairly robust set of rules and regulations which govern the declaration of emergency, and I think as council may be aware from current events, a state of emergency has been declared on a national level, it has been declared on a state level, it has been declared on a local level, and recently, the City of University Place has filed suit with a declaration of emergency by the city manager. Under the city's municipal code, when council is not in session, it becomes a two-step process by which to declare, an emergency declaration. The first step is by a proclamation by the city manager. That proclamation was issued earlier today. The second step under the municipal code is that it is presented to the council at the earliest practical opportunity for confirmation. That is the second step, and that is the piece of legislation which is in front of you today. That legislation, by its terms, confers that broad authority to respond to the current emergency. It, there's also, it also does one other thing, which is retroactively approves a number of steps which have been taken. Most of the steps which have been taken are largely procedural in nature, administrative in nature, affecting city operations, city staff, city personnel, that sort of thing. There is one exception to that, which is included in your packet. Over the, and that is identified in emergency order number one. Over the weekend, we received word through the Association of Washington Cities that the Washington Grocers Association and the grocery industry had related concerns to them, that they had concerns on local municipal ordinances, on noise constraints, that sort of thing, on the ability to deliver goods and vital services to communities throughout the state. I had the opportunity to review our codes over the weekend. While I did not see any express obstacles within our code to make it abundantly clear and that we could keep the flow of goods going throughout the current emergency situation. The city manager has authorized the Development Services Director and designated together consultation with the chief and myself to identify any other legis, ordinances which are subject to waiver and expressly waiving the enforcement of our noise ordinance, our business code ordinance, and other related noise ordinances for those businesses furnishing deliveries to retailers, grocers, pharmacies, and similar businesses. This emergency declaration would remain in effect until such time as it is terminated by council and/or the city manager, as the case may be. I recognize that for most of the council and for most of the community, this is the first time that they have seen emergency powers exercised, whether it's in the broad form such as this or in a more closer form, has been exercised on a local level. However, this is also a decision which has not been made lightly. This emergency declaration allows us to fine-tune and tailor a response towards the specific needs of the residents of the City of University Place that those other declarations, the national declaration, the state declaration, and the county declaration may not otherwise encompass as we get through this and we get through this current emergency together. So with that, I am happy to answer questions that council may have.
Okay, at this time, are there any council members that have questions? Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. Certainly, I can appreciate the need for the emergency, and there isn't a question about that in my mind. But I do want to have some sense of, so these powers in an emergency situation can be somewhat far-reaching, at least compared to what the powers that are usually available to the city manager. What do you think are some of the most likely ways in which the city manager, under the, the authority here, would use those emergency powers?
I think what you're seeing right now is predominantly, we have taken actions with respect to the city assets and other city code stuff. We may continue to take actions with respect to other city assets. Under the code, as you noted, that the code provides for fairly broad language to make rules and regulations on matters, to delegate to individuals, to obtain vital supplies, to require emergency services of other individuals and the like. I think as you're seeing, certainly at the state level in particular, those cha, those are changing on a daily basis, you know, if not an hourly basis. So to look six weeks out, you know, when schools are set to resume, that's a hard question to answer. I can tell you that the actions that have been undertaken so far are certainly taken in good faith. We are looking to the Health Department and other agencies as lead with more of a localized response, but to the extent that there are gaps in that coverage, you know, that we may have to take into effect, that very well is a gap that we're prepared to fill.
Hard to know the future exactly for all of us at the moment, but having the, the additional authority and the ability to be nimble is a key piece for, for our community, and I, I think this is the type of thing that we need to do. There is some conversation, a little bit, out there, not in our community necessarily, but in the broader context of the United States, and some, some people concerned about martial law. Is there anything in this that would be a step in that direction?
I, I don't think this, I, I would sincerely doubt that the city manager would have the authority to summon the National Guard for that enforcement. We haven't had that conversation about bringing out the National Guard.
I don't think we're going to either.
And I don't think we're going to.
But just in the context of, of what's happening here and in the chatter that is out there, I wanted to just put it on the table so that we could respond.
Right, and, and I think that the key message is be calm, don't panic. We will get through this together as a community, and this is an important step towards that. And a lot of that starts with the leadership of the council in terms of repeating that same message, be calm, don't panic. No, the National Guard is not probably going to be summoned out by the city manager or members of the council. No. Haven't contacted them, so.
Not, not going to have. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to touch on those subjects next.
Okay, Councilmember McCluskey.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I was in alignment with a lot of the questions Mayor Protem was, was asking. And to bet our conversation earlier is that the noise ordinance, neighbor to neighbor, is still intact and in place. It's just for the emergency services and to get the delivery, deliveries of goods to those who, who need it. That's what's impacted the most. I think that's prudent and wise to do. And also, the, with the declaration of the, the emergency status within the 48 hours, and then once we can do electronic meetings, that, that could be pretty much satisfied within that reasonable timeframe.
Right, and just, and just a word, and it kind of goes back to what the Mayor Protem had asked with respect to the noise component, too. This is us attempting to be forward-looking in response to this, these of certain business sectors that we had not readily identified. This was brought to us by the industry through AWC, so we're trying to get out in front of it. It's not something, you know, when you plan one of these, that you think, hey, we need to waive a noise ordinance. But it's there, and I think that's an example of don't panic and us acting in good faith so we can get those goods to our citizens.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Man, I, I just want to applaud you and Steve Suggs, the city manager, for the proclamation. I think you, you've been spot on. I've been somewhat critical about governments' slow to react in this whole situation we have. I think the proclamation you have is forward and getting out ahead of things. So I appreciate the action that you and the rest of the staff are taking on that. I also like your comments and want to echo those again that, you know, at a time when it seems to be pure panic out in the public, the, the message of staying calm and, and taking a reasonable approach to the situation is certainly warranted. The one question I did have, just for clarification, more than anything on here, is looking at the ordinance itself and looking under Section 2 and Paragraph 1, where it says, enter into contracts and incur obligations necessary to combat such emergency. There's no real definition, at least within the ordinance itself, of what the said emergency is. So is that intentional? And if so, walk us through that if you would, please.
Sure, in terms of procuring goods in relation to the emergency, I think from the warehouse clauses, it's fairly abundant, together with writing context with the proclamation. Now, we're currently referring to the COVID declaration of emergency. If we need to obtain good services or obtain contracts, that allows us that broad flexibility to do so. Whether we have to do something similar to what King County did and lease space, that's procure contracts. If we identify goods that we need to bring into the community, that's procure goods. So that's the sort of thing, if it comes to it, that we need to do. It may also just be simply smaller stuff, too. Whether we need to buy a whole bunch of hand sanitizer, I mean a little flip, and I don't mean to, that we need to bring, you know, get some hand sanitizer, you know, and start distributing it door to door, or some other things along those lines.
Okay, I appreciate that. And reason why I ask that question is since this is, tonight we're public, publicly televising this, it's important for the public to hear exactly what we're trying to do here, so, thank you.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor. Matt, we have the reserves that, and I'm talking about the reserves that deals with the council using those reserves. We need, I think, a supermajority for them to be used. Will this emergency powers have any link to utilizing those if necessary?
At this time, I would believe that the code language would arguably conflict with that, so we would still need to come back before council to make an expenditure specifically from the reserves. That doesn't mean that we can't incur that. The question then becomes, where is the source of that funding?
Okay, so.
I, I can tell.
So that brings into question, emergency powers should be restricted to what the city manager may have available to him, not to incur expenses that he has, there is no budget for him to do so.
I'm not sure I follow your question.
Well, because you said that he can incur the, the expenses and then figure out how to pay for it later. I didn't, that didn't make any sense to me. I mean, if that's, if that's, if that's true, then, then the emergency powers for expenditure of, or to, for contracts or expenditures should, or encumbering monies should stop at a point that he cannot afford to pay out of his budget.
I don't, I, I can, what I think I can say at this point is, at least on the discussions that we have had internally so far, we are not in a position, we are not yet in a position where we are looking at unilaterally expending the reserve dollars.
I'm not just talking about reserves now, which I was, I was just talking about the reserves, but you brought another factor, and that is the emergency powers could, the way it's stated now, could give the city manager the ability to expend or to promise or encumber, or not encumber, but to, to contract out more than what he is authorized, or let's put it this way, not authorized, but more than the budget may allow.
I think the discussions that we have had so far, we're not looking at that scenario.
Yes, but that's not clear here in writing. So council, as far as, I, I'd like to add or change this so that, that the, I understand about this emergency order, okay? I just don't believe, we need to, to have a restriction here that, that it should be restricted to the point, cannot go beyond the budget that we have given him to shuffle around, the general funds or any other funds and then he sees that we normally have given him to shuffle around, to expend. But he wouldn't have the right to, to, to contract and say, well, I don't have the money, but the council's going to have to figure it out or use their reserves. I just want to be real clear here. So that's my take on that, and I like to be clear on, on writing here.
Councilmember McCluskey.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were. You paused. Oops, you went, I turned you, I turned you off accidentally, sir.
Well, I need a response, and two is, the other question that I have here is, so the governor and who knows who else that has powers over us, the president and legislature, state legislature, and says, well, you have to, for example, cut enough businesses, restaurants, close enough the restaurants and bars, and no more than 20, no more than 50 people. Who, who incurs the cost for enforcing those? And if it's, and if it gets worse than better, and there's more restrictions, is the, if the can-hire powers in, in, let me see if I can say this correctly, put the onus on, the, encumber the cities to cover the cost to enforce those restrictions?
Let me, let me take those questions in reverse, in terms of encumbering the cities to cover those restrictions. At this point in time, I'm not aware of any authority that would essentially draft the cities into enforcing those state-based restrictions.
If there was.
We would be submitting a claim.
Do we have to incur that cost? Because I, see, you submit and do it, incurring the cost and then submitting the claim, we may never get it. I prefer to say, no, if you, if you can't, you can't put a burden on us of having to enforce a law that we don't have any funds for.
As I said, I'm not aware of any authority for that. As I said, I'm not aware of any authority for that, however.
Well, no, we're all, this is all about emergency, being prepared for it, so we have to cover our bases.
Well, we still have to cover our bases for it, the question then becomes whose basis is it?
Ours, I'm, I'm trying to cover our citizens' base.
And I appreciate that.
So, as we all know, there's always laws that are drawn up that have no money to pay for, to, to enforce those laws. In this case, as the way that is going right now, is there's more restrictions being placed, and at some point, if it has to be enforced, who covers that? Do we pay extra police to cover that, and that comes out of our budget? Again, I, I think that we need, we need to have some kind of a stop in what gets promised in payment for services that we didn't ask for. So I think that at some point, one solution is come back to the council. So, this is, this is not an emergency order, that, this is like a blank check to me, and I'm not, I'm not there yet.
Okay, are you done? Councilmember McCleskey.
Thank you, Mayor. As I'm reading this proclamation, it is just for emergency services, food, clothing, medicines, things of that nature. I don't want our citizens to wait 48 hours or when the council can reconvene as a quorum to wait for emergency, or even some, some sort of emergent crisis or needs. You know, we have the EOC, we have our, the health department, we have been highly trained through FEMA, there's also additional emergency funding, federal, state, and county levels that can, they can help us through the crisis as well, and also, looking at, at our budget in, I would think in a state of emergency that our needs of our citizens come first. Their, their health and well-being, to me, is foremost up, up front, and it needs to be taken care of immediately, and if we have a situation of a crisis that is higher than this level of crisis, an electrical storm, earthquake, that happens quicker than the council can get together. But this is the proclamation that is only for this particular situation, and it's not heightened to that level. So I feel pretty comfortable that Mr. Sugg will take care and do, do his due diligence to, to do what he needs to meet the needs of our citizens of University Place, because no one else is going to take care of them. We're, we need to, we need to step up to do that, in partnership with all the other agencies that you have been constantly, daily, twice or thrice daily, been in contact with. So I, you know, I applaud you for all your efforts that you have done, you worked tirelessly to, to do it, and I would like to give you all the tools that you need to do your job expertously and, and with the highest capacity that, that we can enable you within the constraints of what, what we can do, realistically can do. And with this new ordinance or.
Resolution.
Resolution, but also the changes in the council rules, as long as we have electronically connected devices, you know, we're, we're able to do it within the 48 hours, because you've been very good at, you know, calling us and letting us know and giving us updates and giving you our feedback as we have evolved in whatever crisis that, that had happened within our city as well. So, I'm not really, you know, I'm always cognizant of the money and the budget and to, and to not, you know, bankrupt our city, but there's other tools and there's resources at this point in time. I think when it gets to that level, you will probably ask us to come together electronically or on the dais to further discuss those needs, and I think sometimes you need to have something other than your $30,000 authority in order to do that.
Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I appreciate the comments that have been made so far, both for and against the resolution, but, you know, I just want to reiterate that the, the situation we find ourselves with this COVID-19 is really unprecedented, and it's not business-as-usual that we're dealing with. So, you know, with the request from the city manager and the city attorney to pass this resolution, I, I think we really have to come to grips that we've got to trust that you're going to exercise good judgment and, and resources as you need to. You certainly have not given us cause not to trust that, so, you know, as we move forward, I, I think it really is incumbent upon the city to do its due diligence in terms of enforcing whatever the laws as they change daily and sometimes hourly in dealing with this crisis that we find ourselves in. Granted, we also face unfunded mandates that come from time to time, and our hope as a city that we could recuperate, whatever costs those may be, but as I pointed out, this is very unusual. I don't recall ever in the history of the state have we ever faced anything of this magnitude, even back during 9/11, we didn't face this. So we're, we really are in uncharted territory at this time. I, I think as a city council, it's our responsibility as, as the leaders and certainly as a community to do our part in trying to curb the pandemic as it affects our citizens and our community, and I think the resolution that's before us really is not unreasonable, based on what I've learned from this, and if I also understand with the resolution, it allows the city then to request the fundings that we would need, the additional funds to address whatever situations may arise, and if I misstated that, I would certainly call, call on both of you to correct me for that. So I'm comfortable with what you're requesting, so thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Blythe. It's, I think it is important for us to think about the financial implications as we, we look at any decisions we make. The, the fact is, we have, no one's anticipated this, no one could, but we have anticipated something, and we do have some reserves put aside for purposes like this. We've been, we've gotten ourselves reasonably prepared to a, to a future we couldn't see exactly. I think our processes, we'll have to go back and check what our processes are, but I, I think, in fact, they probably do come back to the council to get authority to access the reserves. I don't think this opens that door, but I'm, that's not my job here to figure that out or not. But in an emergent situation like this, and I, there's no doubt in my mind, we're in an emergency situation, we are at the national level, we are at the state level, we are at our county's level, and every county near us, three other cities in this county alone, I think we're there. It's, it's a certifiable emergency for us. What we need to do is just make sure that we do everything we can, protect our citizens at University Place, and getting this in place allows us to take the steps that we need to, through the manager, to do that. I think it also gives us some further standing in possibly recovering costs through FEMA, a federal emergency management agency, and it's important that we can try and collect what we can. It's going to be a very expensive thing across this nation, and I don't know that there'll be anything at the end of the day for us, I hope there is, but I also, from my previous experiences, know it's a several-year process to get reimbursed, and that's why we have reserves. But point is, we have them, well, we should, we don't need to spend them, we don't need them, but it's really about getting services, and unfortunately, when we need more police officers, assuming we have our first responders there, as we, as we certainly hope we do, if there's a bigger bill that comes with it, we still need the police officers. The bill is the second question or the third question, not the very first question, do we need help? We, if we do, we get it, and then we figure out what to do about it. So, from my perspective, yeah, this is an emergency, we should certify it, the authorities are necessary, and I'm, we will be prudent in our reviews, though.
Well, thank you, everybody's had an opportunity to speak, so I'll put my two cents worth in, and I'm, yes, this is the second go-round, so, yeah, I haven't spoken yet. We are informed on a daily basis of the status and, and what the staff is going through, we get reports, our city manager has been very good about informing us of decisions that are being made. If there are items that exceed his authority, or he anticipates the needs for some emergent items, we will all be notified ahead of time that this, that this need is, is coming, I'm fully confident of, but he needs the flexibility by which to, to address the situations that are changing literally on an hourly basis in some cases, and to add another layer of, of time into it and could potentially jeopardize our citizens in, in some form or fashion. That is why you do emergency declarations based on the particular emergency that is there at hand. So I am in full support of going forward with this, I appreciate the staff's diligence on, on keeping up to date on all the webinars and information that's out there from our federal, state, and county jurisdictions, and making the best possible decision for the citizens of, of University Place to ensure that these other entities cannot know what the needs of our citizens are better than our staff can, and they are able to, to do the work and the due diligence that's needed to make sure that we address the needs directly here in this, in, in our community. And yes, it will take some time, if we do have to go into our emergency reserves to, to pay for, for something, to get reimbursed from the federal or the state level, but we are in a position where, fortunately, at this time, we are able to address the needs for this particular thing, and hopefully, this is something that will be in our, behind us sooner rather than later, and we can continue on with normal operation. So, I will be supporting this as it moves forward.
Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Mayor. It certainly looks like I'm aware by myself, but that's okay. And I do understand, and I do agree, I still have a huge concern about finances, we're not, yes, we have reserves, it's not a lot, and so, Lee's at a minimum, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for mentioning about the reports, and I heard Councilmember Fleming as well, you know, I think that Steve Suggs, our city manager, has done well in reporting to us and let us know what's going on, I certainly want to reinforce that, and even more so, especially in the area that if, if you feel, Mr. Sugg, that, that there's an expenditure out of the budget that's going to, to come out of an area that was meant for operations of some sorts, and I'm just making this up, let's say, street paving, and, or something like that, that, and then because you said, well, oh, the council will figure it out later, yes, I think that any, any monies that are utilized, that's going to come out out of something that we were going to use it for, should be reported to us pretty much immediately, so we can be aware of it, even if it's an email, not at the next council meeting, that's what I would like to have as a council member. And one, one example would be, and this is a question as part of this here, and that is, we have our 25th anniversary coming up, we as a council voted to provide out of the budget $80,000 for that. If we don't have this, because of this whole scenario, emergency scenario, could Mr. Sugg, the administration, utilize that $80,000 before coming to us to undo that, what we passed as a council, or can he go ahead and use that? So in other words, there's monies that we budgeted for certain things to operate this city, and I'm, and no one, Mr. Sugg, he's going to go to, to that funds that have the least impact on staff and operations and community service and things like that, so getting back to the 25th anniversary budget, would, would you have to come back to us to say, you can spend that as a general fund, or use it for whatever you need for emergency services, or can you do it on your own? Do we know that?
In, in any circumstance, obviously, council's going to have the final budgetary pen with respect to that, and it's going to come in the form of a budget adjustment, however, what I would ask the council to bear in mind is this, to continue to use your example of the 25th anniversary, which is to have a certain healthy sense of priority. We are facing a global pandemic as declared by the World Health Organization. I suspect that our 25th anniversary celebration, while it is certainly local and very much important on the local level, in addressing the health, safety, welfare of our residents, that very well may take second place to ensuring their health, safety, and welfare. So at some point, council's going to have a touch, but the health, safety, and welfare of our residents is going to take priority.
Maybe I didn't express myself, communicate this well.
So, councilmember, you, you asked about, could I tap that funding source?
Right, without coming back to us.
For the purposes of expending funds related to the COVID emergency response, and the, you know, the answer is, we're just really, literally dazed, I, I signed the declaration of emergency this morning, so we're figuring this out as we go, we don't have all the answers right, I don't have the, all the answers that, to all the questions that you might have, and those are things that we'll be looking into. I've spent a little time with our finance director this morning, but most of it was, was with the department heads on, on how we're going to operate in a, in an emergency, with these emergency conditions and continue to operate the city. So, I guess more to be known about that, but the particular granular details of how we would, of what funds and, and what process I would use to, to access those funds if, if it was needed.
I think Matt answered that question for me, and that is that, as we move on to our budget adjustments, you'll say, this is the expenditures for emergency situations, and this is the areas they should come from, and we can make that.
Right, and it may occur after the fact, just so you're aware of that.
Correct, so, you answered my question, I think I feel comfortable with that, thank you very much, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Fleming.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, it, it's interesting that we're having this conversation, because it's been stated repeatedly tonight that, you know, we are in a state of emergency, the feds have declared it, the state has declared it, and as of today, the city has declared it. So, you know, protecting this, as you pointed out, Matt, the protection of our citizens, their safety, their welfare, and their well-being is really job one at this point, that's of paramount importance, and nothing that this city does should supersede that. So, you know, when we talk about funding for a city celebration, quite frankly, I don't care, you know, the taking care of the people is far more important than a party, so, to the city manager, I'm speaking for myself, obviously, and not for the council, but if you have to make a critical decision of the safety, security, and well-being of the people over a party, I would hope to God that you would use those funds to do that.
Yeah, definitely.
You know, it's, you know, again, you know, the priority, you know, it's how we set our priorities, and I think as a city, we have set the priority that the safety and well-being right now is, is the number-one issue of the day, and if we have to reconvene as a council and reevaluate our budget and make adjustments later, then so be it, but, you know, right now, with this proclamation and the ord, or the resolution that's before us, we're giving the city manager and trusting the city manager to exercise those broad powers of authority to do what's right, you know, and make sure that those priorities are truly aligned with what the values and the concerns of the council and, and our community are. So, again, I just want to be very clear, you know, if you've got to readjust funds to cover those, do So, again, I just want to be very clear, you know, if you've got to readjust funds to cover those, do that. And then we'll, as a council, our job, really as a community leaders, is to figure it out in the aftermath. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kaser.
Yeah, the one thing I just want to bring to the council's attention, it's more of a housekeeping issue as it relates to the agenda, is that with respect to any legislation, you have the staff report, public comment, and council discussion. I don't want council to lose sight of the fact, at least based on the tone of the conversation, you're getting more into the council deliberation without taking mindful of the fact that there is still public present, or at least there was when we started the meeting.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Worthington.
I'll defer until after the public comment. Thank you.
Okay. All right. At this time, we have had all our questions and comments made. Do we have anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this ordinance? Okay, not seeing any. I would entertain a motion for the proposed action item. Council, Mayor Protem Worthington.
I move adoption of the certification of, excuse me, Resolution 918, is that correct? Mm-hmm, 918. So, thank you. Just move adoption for approval of the resolution number 918.
Oh, can you put your mic on?
Yeah, there we go.
Councilmember Fleming.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I was going to say I second that, but also with, just for the record then, with the inclusion that the proclamation of a state of emergency, I'm assuming in your motion is included in that Resolution 918. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution certifying the existence of an emergency relative to COVID-19. Do I have any discussion? Okay, not hearing. Councilmember Figueroa.
Yeah, I just want to be very, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to be very clear to my colleagues here that...
I turned you off accidentally, sir. I'm having problems, mechanical problems today. Go ahead.
We all have had our problems. Is, is, there's no wrong to debate, to discuss, to openly be transparent about concerns, whether you agree or disagree. It's important to let them out because I guarantee you, if it's not, if it's me, then there's others out there that are thinking the same thing. Because financing, finances have been a major issue in this city. So I want to make sure that there's a thorough transparency about cost, about budget, about reserves. And so, yes, do we need to pass an emergency order? Yes. Do we need to see where we lie within that order, how flexible it is, or how restrictive it is? Yes, in my eyes, I do. And so I don't, you know, one thing that should not be, we should not be ashamed of or leery of is to question, and you might take it, I don't think that Mr. Suggs, he's been around for a long time, has been questioning about his integrity, about how he's going to spend, and about the priorities, is part of the game as far as public discussion. And it's important to have it, especially when we're talking on an emergency order. A lot of people don't understand, even when the president does it, or Inslee does it, or the county does it. They're wondering, "What the heck are you talking about? Tell me more." And I think that at the local level, we need to say more. And that's my take on it. I think that is, and I might have miscommunicated about the 25th anniversary. It wasn't about that it has a priority over anything. That was my point, is that that should be the first monies to go before other important things that run the city. And that was my point. If I wasn't clear about that, I want to make sure it is clear now. But certainly, Mr. Suggs needs some directions, and how we feel about how monies will be expended. And I have that right to do so without Mr. Suggs thinking that I'm not trustworthy, he's not trustworthy of how he's going to run our city. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Okay, not hearing any. All in favor of adopting Resolution 918 signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes. Okay, at this time, we are at the City Manager Council Comment Section of our agenda. Mr. Suggs, do you have a report?
Well, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, last week, the end of the week, the library, Pierce County Library System, closed all their branches down, including the University Place Library, which is on the first floor of this building. And we have decided to close this building as well so that the whole idea here is in keeping with what's going on nationally, and certainly within this state, is to try to slow down the spread of community transmission of this virus. And we are encouraging those employees that can work remotely, and fortunately, we have the tools to do that. Some cannot, and those will, some will still be reporting to duty. Field workers, those, certain crew members that work at the Public Works Crew, as well as certain people that, for this building. But we are putting information out on our website and Facebook and other social media, our social media accounts. And we encourage any member of the public that needs to get a hold of us to, obviously, there's the telephone, the email, and the city's website, and other channels. But we're putting information out, more information to come. And we want to make sure that the public that needs to get a hold of us can, and we can get them a timely response. But, but again, in keeping with what's going on, we want to do our part to, to, again, limit or slow down the spread of community transmission of this virus. Thank you.
Are there any council reports or comments at this time? Mayor Protem Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor Belisi. So I have a couple of things to comment on. One, certainly, the priority of the day is about COVID-19, if not priority not just here, but of the nation. And we'll probably talk some more about that in a little bit. We have regular business to conduct too. And while that isn't the same priority by any means, it's still part of what we do in a meeting. So with that in mind, I wanted to share with the council members with regards to the Imagine Committee. We are working on going through the various, now roughly 1,000 comments we have from our flash vote pulling. Of those, we've categorized about 209 that are legislative-related. And so we're going to be sharing those, plus some more, because we haven't actually, the last survey hasn't been incorporated into that list yet. So the committee has some work to do this week. Perhaps we'll do that remotely if this, or maybe we'll come in and do it. But we'll get our work done. And we will give you beginning, sometime next week, I was going to say the beginning of next week. I'm shooting now for next week, somewhere in the course of it. You'll get an email from us. In that email will be a list of all of these legislative ideas that the public has had. And we're going to do our best to group those, just so it doesn't, so it's easy to digest, you can see the commonalities. Well, we're working to relate them to the council goals, the four primary council goals that are already adopted. And some relate well, some may not, but you'll see that. And then we're going to ask you to rate each one of those comments, or sets of comments, as to how, where they are in your priorities as a council member. It's kind of a one, two, three. We're going to have different labels to it, but they'll be one, two, or three. And we'll take that information from you, recompile that, staff will, and have it brought out at the April 20 goal-setting session, and that'll be part of that session. So the Imagine Committee is going to get that out to you next week. We're going to ask that you get your work done to us, back to us, if you could please, within about two, three weeks. And that'll give us enough time, getting it back to us approximately April 10, that we can have it back to you on the 20th, neatly compiled and perhaps easy to digest, but ready to make that meeting worthwhile. There's a lot of interesting ideas there, and you'll get a chance to revisit them. I know you've seen some at our previous, you've seen them, for the most part, at our previous retreat. Outside of that, as we all get to figure out what's next here in the world of coronavirus or COVID-19, it gets to be pretty challenging for each of us. I wanted to tell you a little bit about my afternoon. So today, I was, I've been in the house the last couple of days, probably like many people. And I was putting the laundry back, it'd been washed, and had my shirts, getting them on hangers, getting them in the closet. This one hanger wouldn't fit in the closet. I couldn't get it in there. I was really upset at that hanger. And it occurred to me, maybe it's not the hanger that I'm upset with. Maybe it's just more about all the stuff that's in the air, the news that I watch too much of. Maybe it was really just those stresses I get to focus on a hanger for a minute. The hanger is just going to be okay. Whatever I did to that hanger, it doesn't matter. But if, when we're, when we feel that way, deal with the hanger, but don't deal with the person that way. And it's very easy for us to turn our attention in what might be a stressful moment on someone, unintendedly or unthoughtfully, really. So I just want to relate that, and remember, there is different ways for us to deal with that. And it is a stressful time, but it's also a great time for family, it's a great time for neighborhoods, and it's a great time for neighbors to come together, talk over the fence, do whatever it is you'd like to do. But it's rediscovering a lot of things about our community and about yourself and myself. So, so opportunities there as well. But thank you, just wanted to share that a little bit.
Well, thank you for the reminder, Mayor Protem Worthington. Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see here, my notes. So because of the closing of several mini-small businesses, we're obviously going to have a lack of sales tax, maybe excise tax. Is it possible to get a report sooner than later? Normally, we get a report, you know, in October or whatever on our budget. It would be nice to get some kind of an analysis, what if this continues for two months, four months, six months, what that may mean for revenue lost, how businesses look like to us. And because that'll start letting us know what, how short we are. Is there enough monies from different pockets to cover that? I'm not sure, but I certainly would like to potentially have us look at that sooner than later. If there's a way to, a model to kind of forecast that out. Because we know there are people who are going to close, so there could be a model. The other one is Councilmember Worthington. Thank you for that report. That sounds really interesting. I'm looking forward to that. With this whole scenario about the coronavirus, and with new, a new area that is unknown, that people are not used to, restaurants closing, stores, and no more than 25 people, maybe even 20 people, maybe none going into stores and things like that. Is there a way to have this, I just went blank.
Flash vote?
Yeah, the flash vote, to have three questions concerning that area to get a feel what our community is, you know, I don't know what those questions will be, to get a feeling of what, but it seems like it would be an appropriate time to really get a feeler out there on some critical areas, and how they are feeling, or what they see could be done, or whatever.
Short answer, yes, I think there is.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember McCloskey.
Okay, thank you. I just spent the last two days with my grandchildren, give my daughter a break. It's only just the beginning. But that was a lot of fun, but both Bob and I are a little bit extra tired than we normally would be. So I thank you for your reminder that we do need to remain thoughtful and kind and attune to our neighbors to make sure that they're being taken care of as well. Because as we become more and more housebound or fearful, some, sometimes in the isolation, we forget, you know, to help our neighbors out because they're more than likely not going to reach out to you. So we reach out to them to see how they are doing. And I am certainly glad I'm not your hanger. But I can understand, so we need to really trust in the protocols from both our health and government, and not, and be humble enough to accept a helping hand. And with that, the U.P. recycle program, which was ready to kick off the end of March, obviously, there's no school. So I'm trying to think of how we could virtually get all those students together and figure out how to do a virtual webinar presentation. But if that doesn't work out, then the recycle program will be delayed, but it will be up and coming as soon as it can. And that's it.
Okay, any other council comments? Councilmember Figueroa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's more of a question, since you brought up the recycling. Is U.P. Refuge, I haven't heard anything because this coming up is the free...
Of the spring cleanup?
Spring cleanup, which is right around the corner. If, I would assume that U.P. Refuge is just going to send some kind of a notice. Their newsletter would normally not come back out again before that event. So, Mr. Suggs, any way we can get the word out to the community, this might be a good time. If not, maybe on our website, whatever we can do, because a lot of people depend on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just want to provide an update to the community. I did cancel my meetup with the mayor this last Saturday. Unfortunately, just because of circumstances, I felt it prudent to shut the event down for the day. I am still planning on holding a meeting if circumstances change in April, the first, or the second Saturday in April, and the second Tuesday in April. But please do tune into our University Place website, to our Facebook page, Twitter, et cetera, to receive updates on not only the meetup with the mayor, but any other scheduling changes, updates on coronavirus, expectations, et cetera, any late news so that you are aware of what is going on in our community. I want to thank PCTV here for live-streaming our council meeting this evening. So if there are citizens out there that are watching us live tonight and you feel that it is helpful, it would be nice to, if we received an email or something, to let us know how effective this meeting was. As we proceed on down the stream, there may be opportunities for us to continue this as an outreach or, you know, keep you informed in this manner. So I want to thank the community for staying strong and keeping their heads on and being very concerted in their interactions with others and helping their neighbors out. And I also want you to pay attention to our small businesses in our community that are being heavily impacted by the current regulations. We've got businesses, restaurants, we've got salons, we've got fitness outfits that all are having to close as a result of the latest regulations that have come down. And these are often local mom-and-pop operations that depend on the revenue they receive from the clients that frequent their establishments. So if there's some way that you can think of to support these businesses, I would highly encourage you to do so within the guidelines as proposed by the governor so that we can come out of this successfully and have the vibrant community that we have all been striving for. We will get through this. This isn't the first time our world has gone through something like this. It is in our lifetime, but I feel confident that we have the leaders in place that are going to see us through this, and we just have to remain positive. this, and we just have to remain positive and keep ourselves informed of what's going on, and do what we can to assist our neighbors in any way possible to make this as, as seamless as possible. So with that, our, our taped portion of our council meeting is over. We are going to recess an executive session, and at this time of the agenda, the council is going to adjourn to executive session for approximately 30 minutes per RCW 42 dot 30 dot 1404B to review proposals and adopt strategy to be taken by the city during the course of collective bargaining. Any action on this issue will be taken during open, during council open session at, at a yet-to-be-determined time. Following the executive session, our council is going to go into a training on Office 365, including the Microsoft Teams. We will be conducting that in our council conference room. It will not be televised, but no action is going to be taken by us at this time. The intent is for us to be trained and be able to continue our business as seamlessly as possible as we move forward in what is yet to be determined in this emergency situation. So with that, I want to thank everybody for joining us on TV, and I am going to adjourn our meeting at the, or recess our meeting into executive session, sorry.